Two minutes, Mike.
Two minutes?
One minute, one minute now.
You hear that gap?
That's that board.
It was official clock back here.
Take one.
And that's not official, that's off by a minute or and a half.
Yeah, almost two minutes, huh?
I have five fifty nine.
So did you see that, buddy? I haven't, no, I would like to.
Glad my monitor's working, the last couple of meetings it hasn't been working, and I know you say.
All right, good evening, everyone, it's six o'clock, start tonight's study session. First item on the agenda is our fire department with the fire department smoke detector update.
Mr. Mayor, Council, staff, thank you for the opportunity to let me update you on our annual smoke detector installation program. Very vital program to our community. Statistics tell us that approximately three hundred and forty thousand home fires occur every year. Kind of a scary statistic, right? So, one nice thing that comes out of that is that out of those, if you're unfortunate enough to have that fire happen in your home, those statistics also show that you're fifty percent more likely to survive it if you have working smoke alarms. So, the program that has been going on here in Casa Grande for about thirteen years, what we do is we provide smoke detectors free of charge to our community members. Conducted by organizing a little over a hundred volunteers at times, I know Mr. Mayor's been out there with us. So, the volunteers really are the heart of the program. It's not just a fire department program, we have volunteers from the police department, fire department, winter visitors, our year-round residents as well participate. We've partnered with a lot of national organizations. This year, we were lucky enough to partner with the American Red Cross and the Arizona Burn Foundation. And our program would definitely not be possible without our local businesses. This year, the army of volunteers was fed by Olive Garden. They donated catering for the entire group for lunch. We have monetary donations from a lot of local businesses as well, ranging from Get Hard Insurance to Home Depot and Lowe's. So, like I said, this is the thirteenth year of the program. One thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine individual volunteers over that timeframe. Once again, these really are the heart of our program. We have one couple here in Casa Grande that have participated in every single year of this program. It really is an amazing community event, and I'm, it's my third year being involved in it, and it really is just a pleasure. We targeted seven thousand three hundred and ninety-seven homes over those thirteen years, and of those homes, we installed seven thousand and forty-seven smoke alarms. Two hundred and seventy-nine of those happened this year. It's a long-lasting impact for our community, it really is. This is kind of my favorite part of the presentation that gets me really excited is some of the innovations and new things that we're doing out there. Many of you may remember when we first started this, it was the old-style smoke detectors, we had to change out the batteries, you know, every six months, check your batteries, right? Now, we have ten-year sealed smoke detectors. This does a couple of things. You pull this tab, install it, it's good for ten years, no maintenance, nothing at all. It also reduces the cost of maintenance for the, for the community member that we install it, they don't have to buy any additional batteries, they don't have to mark their calendars, it just sits there, and when it's ready to expire, it actually alarms and sounds. Pretty impressive piece of equipment.
What's the name again?
This is a ten-year sealed smoke detector. They, they go by names, but the technology is, is, it is good for ten years because your smoke detectors in your home, not sure if you're aware, do expire. Every ten years, you're supposed to replace your smoke detectors. One item also that we kind of did a pilot test this year with is called the stove top fire stop. So, of those three hundred and forty thousand fires out there that happen every year, the number one cause is cooking fires. So, we got some of the devices onboard, and how it operates is basically it's a fire extinguisher in a can. It's got a little fuse right here, so when the flame impacts it, and as you can see from the graphic, it actually shoots down like a fire extinguisher and puts out the, puts out the fire. What we're doing is targeting the community members out there, like our elderly that live alone, those that may have something such as dementia or be physically disabled, these do work, I've seen it firsthand here, here in the city. They're an amazing product, we kind of nailed down our policies and procedures for installing them this year, and they're going to become a bigger part of the program next year.
So you just hang it under the?
Yes, you just hang it right underneath the stove, it's actually got a magnet. Yes, ma'am.
So, when you were talking ten-year and that, what about if you have an alarm that's hardwired?
Same thing, ma'am. Most of your hard, excuse me, all of your hardwired smoke alarms are also required to be replaced every ten years. I just replaced mine to mine.
Good to know, I wouldn't have thought about that, yeah.
And that's the nice thing about the ten-year sealed alarms is you don't have to give it that second, it just, it sits there and it does its job. If you have any comments or questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Do you have the combination with, in those alarms?
Not the ones we currently install. This unit here retails for about thirty-five dollars. Through our partnership with the Burn Foundation, we, we obtain them for about fourteen dollars. In the future, that would be a goal, to obtain those CO alarms as well, as the multiple alarms, but not at this time, sir.
I know we put a, a new room onto our house, and the city required that, and I thought it was a really good idea.
Yes, sir.
So.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I just have a quick one, how many, depending on the size of the home, how many do you install? One?
No, we'll put in as many.
So, it, it, literally, like you said, ma'am, it does depend on the size of the home. So, national standards require then one in each sleeping room, and then one outside of that sleeping room. So, some of the homes we go into, it may just be one detector, and then others, it may be seven or eight.
Okay, but you do, okay, damn, right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. It's whatever they need. I put four or five in some houses.
So, it's determined by sleeping and living areas?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Thanks, Mike.
Awesome, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, great job.
It is a great program, I, I can speak from personal experience, the people we interact with are very appreciative.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, yeah.
I like that stove thing.
And that's a lot of volunteers.
Yeah, that is cool. Yeah, that is very cool.
Okay, next item on the agenda, I believe, is human resource. Mr. Scott?
Mayor McFarland, members of the council, my honor.
Yes.
Thank you. We're here tonight to talk about employee classification compensation coming in, as I mentioned to you at your planning retreat, we had ready to, to begin to launch this project that's been budgeted in the current fiscal year budget. As a matter of fact, upon my arrival in mid-October, my expectation was to be able to, to get going right away and get this on the street, and with other priorities that came along at the discussion with the city manager, and decided to, to take a little different approach, to provide adequate time to do all the things we felt like we needed to do, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in just a moment. The last comprehensive update of our classification and compensation program, which including the, the complete evaluation and actual rewriting of all of our position descriptions, actually happened in two thousand and five. If not, that's been updated certainly along the way, but the last comprehensive look was fifteen years ago, and so, I think you could argue that the, the work that was done in two thousand and five was, was solid stuff, and we've been able to, to maintain that from year to year. But just an overview of what we have, and I'm, I'm coming to you tonight with two major policy areas, Mayor, Mayor Council, you're involved in policy determination, so there's two specific areas in this project that I wanted to roll out to you and ask whether you had any concerns about, so that we don't go into this study without knowing what those might be. So, one of the issues is, is our current compensation strategy. Both of the issues here relate to compensation, not classification. Classification is simply reflective of asking our employees, tell me what you do, how you do it, tools you use and what have you, and, and then working from there. The compensation is a little bit different. And so, we actually adopted our current compensation philosophy back in nineteen ninety-six. Prior to that time, we had a system that looked at comparators, trying to make sure individually that we were kind of in line, but used annual cost of living considerations to try to maintain our competitiveness. But we did a comprehensive study back in, in nineteen ninety-five and ninety-one, ninety-six, and out of that came the idea of going to more of a market-based approach. The market being comparators that we've identified, that are like us, that do what we do, and they may not be geographically close by, but those that are, are similar, and we use those for our market comparators. So, we know that, that not all of our comparators have fire departments, many of them have fire districts, but we have lots of real solid comparators. Police officer is one of our most solid ones, there's a couple, not any of our comparators, but there's communities that have contracts with their sheriff's office, and they don't have their own departments, but by and large, most of the, the cities and towns, certainly our size, do pretty much what we do, and so, that's solid that way. We also talk about a structure-to-structure approach that focuses on the midpoint. So, we have salary ranges up and down, and the width, so this is market we talked about, and this is merit. So, our employees are able, once established, their classification is attached to a position, to a salary range, they're able to move through the range based on the annual performance evaluation. So, it's a, an evaluation of performance-linked pay system that we have. And in order to, to, to not have to worry about what our comparators do in terms of the width of the structure, whether it's forty-five percent width, sixty-five percent width, or what have you, we're able to focus on the midpoint. So, everybody's midpoint compared to our midpoint, and we declare that midpoint to be market. That's who we're aiming at. So, the idea is, is that, 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 that individuals come in pretty much at the entry level, and by the time they reach the midpoint, they're certainly a journeyman status, journey status, as we say, they're experienced at that particular point in time. And so, it's, it's been a very good and valid compare, comparison point for us, midpoint to midpoint. And our position is that we do a hundred percent of the midpoint. The, the very first consultant that we used to do our study back in ninety-five spoke to the issue, you can use anybody to be a comparator, you could use New York City and Philadelphia and New York, but your position against that market is what becomes important. And so, we've identified our comparators, and we do a hundred percent of the midpoint. The other issue is, is from its very inception, is that we apply a trending factor. Obviously, back in, in, in the nineties, we did not have access to technology that we have today, and the main resource that we had was the annual League of Civic Cities and Towns Salary and Benefits Survey, where all of us report our salary data to the league, and they compile that, that just came out a few weeks ago, as a matter of fact. Well, now, entities post up their pay plans on their, on their websites, since we have a lot more availability to, to data, but it used to be that, that instantly, as the league salary survey is valid as of ten one, so individual entities are reporting all the validity of their data as of October first, and it comes out usually in January of every year. And so, when we use that data to develop our budget recommendations to start in July first, we want to make sure that we don't lag the market, but we also don't want to lead the market. And so, over the course of time, we've applied a, 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 a factor, a trend factor, if you will. So, we trend the data, and the way we have done it, and this is going to be something we're going to be looking at very carefully, but historically, we trended the data from, from ten one through the end of the next calendar year, so we're straddling the market because we're on a fiscal year, seven one to six thirty. So, we're going to be looking at our consultant's recommendation about what kind of factor that we should use. Before, we used all the industry's national payroll trend, and we're going to be looking to refine that a little more carefully. So, sometimes our employees will say, how does general cost of living make its way into our pay plan? And the answer is, well, it happens in two ways. Number one, some of our comparators are making their adjustments based on a number of factors, including general inflation. And the other is, is we're trending this data so that we're reflecting the overall cost of living in a way, in a way, as we trend that. So, we're going to be looking at that and looking for recommendations from our consultants on what factor we should, we should use, and it, it has a lot to do with how aggressive we want to be in terms of competitiveness. So, that's our play, our pay philosophy, if you will, that we've used since nineteen ninety-six, and, and we intend to move forward with that. I think it's served the community well, it's served us well, it's kept us competitive, I think, over the long course of time, over the last fifteen years certainly, especially. The second factor is, who are we going to compare ourselves to? And I pulled down the recent information from the league, which reflects the Poptac estimates, and we know that the twenty, twenty-ten census data is updated every year based on factors that the Population Technical Advisory Committee at the state level uses. And so, we pulled those down, and you take a look at those about our size, doing about what we do. This list that we're proposing is almost identical to the list we've used over a number of years, with a couple of exceptions, it simply reflects the population trends. And you can see that our proposed comparators are Apache Junction, Avondale, Buckeye, Bullhead City, El Mirage, Flagstaff, Goodyear, Cayman, Lake Havasu City, Morana, Oral Valley, we do include Penile County, Prescott, Prescott Valley, Queen Creek, Sierra Vista, and Surprise. Many of the metro communities use other metro cities because they're going head-to-head with those. We're, we are considered outside of the metro area, the fringe metro area, and we're going to be doing a, a turnover evaluation here in the next thirty to sixty days to look back and see where our employees are going, but I don't know that it's reasonable for us to be able to, to compete with the city of Phoenix and, and what have you. So, these are the comparator communities that we're going to be, that we propose to look at, and we're going to be taking our classifications, when they're established, based on the review that the consultant will do, and matching them against comparators. They may not be exactly the same, but we're going to give descriptions to the other communities so they know what's their best match, and we're going to be looking at those issues. And so, those are the, are the comparators, and, and we used Penile County over a long period of time because obviously we are in competition with them, and they are here. Out of the gate, back in the nineties, we actually tried to extract local data so that we could determine on the classifications that made sense to us, mechanic, you know, some other positions that are, that are duplicated, and we found it extremely difficult to extract data, particularly when we were trying to reach in to our corporate residents, our corporate citizens, and they don't share that kind of information. And so, after about, as I recall, six, seven years, we abandoned trying to link to, to local because of the, just the difficulty of finding reliable comparators. So, talking about compensation strategy or philosophy, proposed comparators, those are the two areas that we're, that we're looking to hear whether you have any, 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 any difficulties with. And then finally, what's the next step? Well, we're getting ready to, to issue the request for proposals, and we intend, based on where we are right now, where we think we are, we intend to issue the RFP next month in March, and looking to award in May, start the project in June, and in consultation with the city manager, what our proposal is at this point in time is perhaps to be recommending or uploading into the budget, the first budget, you see some kind of a general adjustment, which general adjustment means the whole pay plan goes up, and so, everybody stays where they're at, and they go up, to maintain our competitiveness right now, and then to include some dollars in the budget for implementation of the results of this study on January first in the middle of the year. So, that gives us adequate time to really do a good job with this analysis, and, and then to be able to, to look at one-one-twenty-one as implementation date. So, that kind of gives you an idea of where we're going to go from here, and I'm ready to answer any questions that you might have, or listen to concerns or comments.
So, do you, well, a couple comparators, how come Maricopa's not in there?
That's a good question.
Because I would think they're about the same size as us, and, I know Coolidge is a little smaller, so I, I can see maybe Coolidge, but there wasn't Maricopa, I didn't see in there.
You and I, I, I really think that's an oversight.
Okay.
Because certainly Maricopa, we think about Penile County, we think Casa Grande, Maricopa, Apache Junction.
Right.
So, thank you for, for pointing that out.
And then, when you talk about the market-based, so this isn't necessarily going to, going to determine by, by communities, it's more for a police officer, I mean, see if I understand this correctly, it's just going to say in, in the market, this is the range for, you know, a police officer or, or whatever, is that what it means by market-to-market approach?
We, we're going to be looking at our pay plan, and the pay plan was, has been adjusted, and so, we're going to be looking at that, and we're going to be looking carefully at the concept of an open range, instead of steps within the range. But our width, our range width is pretty much set as what it's been over a long period of time, so we're really focusing on the midpoint.
The midpoint, okay.
The midpoint is our, is our market point, and so, we'll calculate the midpoint, and then we have a forty percent width, so it'll be twenty percent this way to the entry level, and twenty percent to top out on this way. So, so once the, the market is established, we'll be looking at, let's use police officer example, the midpoint of all of our comparators, for police officer, deputy sheriff, for Penile County, and then we, then we average those out, and then we compare that to our current midpoint, and determine whether we're off the market, plus or minus.
And do you have any, where we are, I know it's hard to, but, you know, based on conversations, you've been in this business a long time, and in, in several cities, so do you have an idea if we're, you know, way short of that midpoint?
I, I did take the opportunity, right after the league survey came out, I took the opportunity to pull a couple of classifications down and just run my own numbers, and, and I, I said this to our employee engagement group as we were talking, giving them information about this, and I said, I, I, my sense is today that we're going to be more competitive than you might think. Part of that has to do with what happened from, you know, oh, eight, oh, nine, all through those years, we didn't worry too much about updating our plans because nobody was really doing anything. As a matter of fact, some communities were actually wanting to do something for their employees, this was my experience, and so, we did a stipend outside of the pay plan so it would not compound, and we wanted to do something, but we didn't know what was going to happen next year, so we didn't want to add to the base, so that's what we did. But I, I, I have a sense, and, and we're going to be typically, all of us, if we're going to be less competitive at what, some level, we tend to be less competitive at some of the higher levels in the organization, and there's a number of dynamics that come into play. But I, I would predict to you that, that we're going to be better off than we might otherwise, than otherwise say. I hope I rhyme.
Well, and I know this is something that's highly anticipated, you know, the employees have, you know, talked about this and wanted this study, so it is really important, and it's good to get it right and be transparent and let everyone know, you know, what, what the final study is, but just want to make sure that we're doing everything, you know, the, the right way, or, you know, what people are looking for, so, but no, so I'm looking forward to it. Yes, no, I know, mhm. It's been something we've been talking about for how many years, right, Larry? So, okay, thank you.
I, I think the, I think this really works good, I remember back in the olden days when we did this, and as you say, we looked at companies here in town and whatever, but this is about the only way, when you do a survey, to have confidence that we're paying about the right amount of money, that we're not way low or way high, we're kind of in the area we need to be in, and I think the, the employees have been happy with, with that. As I say, during the recession, nothing was fun, but it's, it's a different age now, hopefully, so. The other thing I was going to ask, do you ever, how about perks, do you ever explore that, or is it just a?
We're, we're not expecting, we're not including that, certainly starting to accept your recommendation, but this, this particular study does not intend to include benefits. And we, as you all know, we were struggling in the area, we've been struggling in the area of the health insurance benefits. I, I know that we report that information, you can go to the league salary survey, it's a salary and benefit survey, and that information is reported there, where, how you're insured, it also speaks to vacation, whether you use PTO or sick leave, what your accrual is, how much you allow to carry, we've got a lot of information in, in the, in that document, and I, I think I could fairly represent to you that I feel like we're pretty competitive in terms of, of the benefits side, but this study, at least today, does not envision making that comparison.
Okay. That was one of my questions, but I would really like to see that included, if, I don't know if that's part of our thing, because that's part of the total benefits package that we pay as a city, and I don't know if you've, I know we're comparing government jobs to government jobs, but do you ever look at any of our major employers? I know it's hard to get a, a structure, you know, a like-for-like type thing, but at least the benefits, you know, stuff like that, average pay, I, it's really hard to compare the private sector, but I, I don't know if that's possible, if that's ever been done, but I really, but I want to go back, I think, to benefits, and, and that is a big part of our compensation, because some cities may pay higher, but our benefit package is higher, or vice versa, you know, so.
Governor, I can speak to the, to the local competitive comparison issue. We have a, a human resource association here that we're affiliated with the Society of Human Resource Management, and that's, that's the place where some of those who work in government and nonprofits and industry come together, HR folks, and years ago, we really tried to do exactly that, because we really all wanted the information and had to give it up very quickly, again, because, because the industry simply are not willing to share that information with us, and it's understandable. And so, we, we, we really did have to, to give that up, but you're certainly right about total compensation, dollars is dollars, wherever you spend them, so, we can't take a vote, obviously, but I'll rely on the city manager to, to gauge, and we could, we could do a look, and, and the different levels of depth require different costs, so, we certainly can do that.
Yeah, I think so, so, I mean, I would say mostly even, right, because it's state retirement. But the, the health insurance. But the, the health insurance, I think, would be the big, I mean, that's the biggest issue nationally, with presidential debates, everything else, so I think that'd be an important thing to include. And then another question I had, you talked about the steps. Are, are you thinking about going away from steps and moving to a different system, or did I just hear that?
Prior to adoption of the market-based plan, we had whole steps, A, B, C, is what we called them. And in order to give more flexibility, there were about five percent between steps. But we put this plan into place back in, in the nineties, we needed more flexibility, and so we went to a half-step plan, so about two and a half percent. And then, for, for a variety of reasons, back at the start of the current fiscal year, there was a restructuring, and so it went to, it, it went, now we have one through eleven. So the, the, the value of an open range is that when you establish a policy that says a full performance, a full performance increase is X percent, that's what everybody gets, instead of trying to fit it into a step. And I was not a fan of open ranges until my, my last experience over seven years dealing with an open-range system. And there's, there's a, a lot of attractiveness about that, because it brings a precision to what you're trying to achieve in terms of percentage increases. Everybody seems comfortable with percentage instead of steps. But I, we'll see where it takes us.
Just one, one question is, is that, so, we're talking about midpoint, and this is our goal, and we're looking at that, but in some areas, I'm going to assume that we have, we want to entice, and we need an exceptional candidate, and that, do we think about maybe going above a midpoint and taking a look at those? And it takes something more than just that midpoint, in other words, to attract somebody for that department head, for that position, or whatever.
It's, the, the idea of, of the recruitment aspect of this is, is different than, than the, the market study. So we typically, we have a policy that basically says we hire at the entry level. Our policy is that we give our department directors the ability to hire at step two, based on the circumstances that they find themselves in. Beyond step two requires a city manager's approval. And so if somebody has a, it could be a very difficult-to-recruit position, or an exceptionally qualified candidate, then the department director can plead his or her case to the, to the city manager. Occasionally, council will, or council board supervisor will make a decision that we want to be more competitive for a particular classification, and they'll, by policy, plus up that classification against the market. But, but I would argue that because we give the flexibility to hire above the entry level, we accomplish the same thing without, without going farther than we need to go. So we have the tools available today, and we use them regularly to recognize difficult-to-recruit positions and exceptionally qualified applicants.
You know, and, and Scott, I appreciate the fact that right away you had mentioned the, because, you know, I've been part of the county when they did a very comprehensive reclassifications and the compensation. And I think for our employees, you know, my concern is I want to make sure that they have a very clear understanding of why we're doing it, how it's being done, and the fact that the employee engagement group is a part of that discussion early on is important. Because I think what happens is, everybody's ready for it, but when it starts to happen, people get scared about what's going to happen to their position, and the years that they've spent in one position, they think that some of that's going to go away, and then seniority and things. So I'm encouraged by the fact that, I will tell you that I'm, I will really be interested to find out what kind of response we get for consultants, because I think that that can really make or break this kind of activity, you know, when, when we're talking about employees. And so I, I think that, you know, if we, if we have a good mix of people that have some good experience, and that they're not cookie, cookie cutters, and I have seen that happen, where companies come in, and, you know, they just take out somebody's name and put Casa Grande in there, and we don't want that. That's not what I want, because our employees deserve more than that. So I'll be encouraged to hear more about that. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to add, during the period of time that we were doing that, prior to this, it went very smoothly, and, and people were, could go in and be shown if they said, well, you know, what does so-and-so pay, that, that they were getting fair, something that was, that was an average of, of what the communities our size do. And, and as I say, it was well-accepted, we really didn't have much issue with it. And so I, I, I know there's a lot of things you think about when you, when you start talking about salary, because everybody has skin in the game on that, but it, I, I think it worked out pretty good before, and I think it will again, because we got that guy with us now.
I, I fully agree that the market survey is the, the way to go. It's kept us competitive for many, many years. I was going to mention to Mary's question, I, I have lived through a time where a police officer was a, a difficult position to fill, and through permission from the city manager, we were allowed to recruit at a higher rate than, than entry level, especially if they were already certified. So it, it, it even works in that area. The, the area that I have concern about is, we, we focus on the midpoint, which, which is fine. The steps or the open range that we're looking at, I, I have heard employees talk about the reality of how long is it going to take me, if I start today, how long is it going to take me to get to midpoint, and then how long is it going to take me to top out in this range? And I, I know when I was a young officer, I think it was around seven years, you would, you would top out in that range. And I think we, we went to a point, I, I'm sure because of financial issues, where we stretched that out to fourteen, I think is what I heard. Well, it's eleven now, but I think we actually, we actually hit fourteen at one point, and I, and that's what I heard from employees. If I started today, it would take me fourteen years to top out. And I think what I heard you say today is, if, under the current structure, if we, if an employee started today, it would take them eleven years to, to top out. I'm not saying any of those are right or wrong, but I think if there's a way to compare that range to other cities, because I, I know from a police officer's standpoint, they talk, and, and they'll, once this comes out, they'll, they'll know exactly how long it takes for Penile County to top out, how long it takes for Maricopa to top out. And, and they'll compare that, not only the dollars, but the, the length of time to reach the top.
And, and to that point, to the extent that we're able to provide performance-linked pay plan, pay, pay plan, then people are moving through the range annually. That, the top-out issue brings a whole other set of issues, because frankly, every job has finite value. Our employees have infinite value, but from a financial perspective, every job has finite value. No one ever promised us raises into infinity. And so one of the dynamics that really comes down is, when somebody's topped out, I'm topped out. Where's their, where's their place for me to go? And you'll also find, in my prior experience, you have, you have a position, you have pay ranges, pay plans, that are, that are inverted. So it, the idea is, the lower grades, it takes less time to get to journey status than it does the higher grades. And so it's, it's inverted this way, so you may have forty percent, sixty-five percent down here. There's all, nothing is inherently right or wrong, but the idea is, is how long it takes me to get topped out in Casa Grande as opposed to to Maricopa, as long as I'm able to progress through the pay range, but more specifically, as long as I am allowed to have ownership in the range that I've achieved through my performance, as the market's adjustments are made, that's the key. Because some entities will not give that ownership. So I've, I've gone through the pay range, you know, one year, two, six months, one year, two, three years, and then, and then there's going to be an adjustment, whether it's a COLA or what have you, but I don't get it. It simply moves me down, and you end up with compression at the bottom of the pay plan. So one of the critical elements, and I didn't use, I didn't talk about it this evening, but it's, it's part of our plan, and has been since inception, is what you've earned a position in the pay range, you maintain that position. So if your classification should be adjusted three percent, you maintain your position in the range, and you go to the next range, and you, you get that difference. And that's why maintaining this plan has annual costs. And our goal is to upload those costs into the first budget you see, not to hide them, they'll still be identified, but in terms of, of looking at the budget and seeing where we are out of the gate, just like the retirement stuff, which has to be uploaded. So that's our goal, is to get that information. So I understand exactly what you're saying. And the other element that comes into that is, the years that we're not able to fund our merit plan, turning it on and turning it off create issues within the pay range structure, that they just are.
And I, and I do understand that there's complicating factors, and I know it, it is not easy, but, but I, I want to express that, that our employees do exchange that information. And just hypothetical, say we have a, a benchmark position that tops out at sixty thousand here in Casa Grande, and the same benchmark position tops out at sixty thousand in Maricopa. And our employee has to be on eleven years to reach that sixty, and Maricopa has to be on for six years. That's, that's a, a competitive issue. And, and, and our employee will feel slighted from that, because he's having to stay longer in order to get to that top position. I don't know the answer to that, I, I'm just asking that it be considered. I, I think it's an important issue to our employees, and, oh, thank you.
You brought up something else interesting I started thinking about, and I don't know if it's important or not. The, the employees are infinitely valuable to the city, because I, that's the heart of our city, so I'm glad we're doing this. Because maybe we'll find out, we're not getting good applicants for this position, because we're way, we're way out of whack on it. You know, the engineer comes to mind a lot, because I know we've talked about that, Mary. But, but the other thing is, you talked about that range and whatever the years is, do you see how many, what the percentage of people at the bottom part of our range are and at the top? Because we have a lot of employees been with the city for a long time, you know, and do you, do you weigh that on other cities, too, to see? You know, do you want to balance in your, in, in your position as HR person? I mean, is there a good balance for that? Do you want more people at the top, more at the bottom? Do you weigh that, just to see, to kind of get statistics of how?
The ideal always is to have.
Have half and half, right?
We want to, we want to attract and retain qualified employees. We want to offer our existing employees promotional opportunities to the extent that we can. So, so that, and we have a tremendous number of long-chinured employees in, in the organization. So this is a topic of regular conversation with, with my peers. What do you do when somebody is topped out? Some organizations, you can, you get a, you, you get a, a flat dollar amount, so if, so say it's three percent is your normal merit rate, you get that, but it's, it's that as a lump sum every year, you're topped out, you can't go anywhere. And it's just, it's, 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 it's a problem. It's always a problem.
Yeah, because I'm saying, like, maybe some position we have, our people are here for three years, you know, and for some reason, at this position, we don't have anyone at the hiring. Are we doing something wrong as to not retaining them? Or, you know, something like that? So do you use that data to, to help?
We haven't drilled down that far, but I, you know, I can tell you that, that I'm, I'm going to be doing a turnover analysis over the last couple of years, and, and the, the sheer variety of the reasons why people leave or stay are as, as different as the people who are here, and personal circumstances, and health, and, and all those kinds of things. So it's really difficult to draw any conclusions from, from that kind of analyses, you know, to, to, I can, you know, I, I know their health insurance program tells me what the average age of our employees are, the average age of a dependent, based on the data that we, that we collect. And, and sometimes you try to draw conclusions from that that don't work. So, so we, you're trying to pick the stuff that, that, that makes sense in relationship to, to competitiveness. Bob pointed out the salary range, how, how wide the range is, that is an issue. And there's some, there's some typical widths, but it's something for us to, to look at as well.
Because we don't want to, yeah, you know, we don't want to train everybody, and then into places after, you know, we want to retain people, so.
And I can tell you, one of the things, in, in my short tenure here, I'm, I'm just amazed at the number of applicants that we're receiving. It's, it's, I'm, I'm hoping that it's a reflection on the reputation of the city of Casa Grande, but, but to getting, when we're talking about getting applications in the hundreds, Ashley Demusio is, is my staff member, my analyst, that's dedicated to recruitment and selection, and she's about wore out, the number of things that are going on. So, and that doesn't necessarily speak to the turnover. We get turnover because of retirements and other kinds of issues, but tremendous number of applicants, people interested, coming to work for us.
I just kind of was looking at the situation on top of your way. If we want an employee for six years, if, if I'm going to work, and the best I can do, I'm, it's six years, I can't go any higher, then I'm going to go somewhere else, instead of sticking around. And I think that it's important that you have a, a ladder to crawl up, and that's what most, most, and, and six-year ladder, I think, is going to lose more people than it's going to attract, because, you know, I'm doing the same thing, I'm not getting any more money, I'm not appreciated, I'm going to go somewhere else, and it does six, and go up theirs to the top out. But when, eleven years seems very realistic, if you, I mean, we want police officers and our employees to stay more than eleven years with us. So eleven years, they can reach that and, and keep going, but as I say, I think that the short, short ladder is, is, is not a good idea at all.
Yeah, but we're not talking about people just sticking in the same job. We want to encourage people to move within the company, right? I mean, there's several levels within the police department and the fire department, that you can go to the next, next stage, right, the next set of steps, if you will. And so you can continue to advance. It's not like, unless you just get stuck there, but that's, that's up to the employee, too.
Yeah, I think the goal has to be to be competitive. It, it doesn't, like Scott said earlier, we don't, we don't want to lag, but we don't necessarily want to lead either. We, we just want to be competitive, so.
I agree. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Scott, this is good, this is part of our strategic plan, and we appreciate you doing that, and look forward to the results.
They're good, thank you.
All right, we'll stand adjourned for about seventeen minutes.